Welcome to call, reception of Nelson County Board of Representatives. The work they made first 2019 to 5:30 PM. We have a Mr. Dawson Parsley that will lead us in the pledge. He's a second grader at Coxus Creek Elementary School. That's all standing.
To the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, Avid Israel, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Dawson. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No changes.
Thank you. For our list is Energize the World and that would be the showcase by Coxus Creek students with Principal Haley Victory.
Hello, I'm Haley Victory and I'm a principal at Coxus Creek Elementary School. We are so excited to share our showcase with you tonight. We know that one of our big initiatives as a district is K- through two literacy and that's something that's very important to us at Coxus Creek. And a big part of what we're going to showcase in this video is a big initiative that we've recently taken on for just literacy, kind of a literacy experience that we've had throughout our entire school community at Coxus Creek. And this is about one school, one book. And this is a grant that we wrote so that every student at Coxus Creek would get a copy of the book, Fish in a Tree. And this really had two parts. The first part was about just a shared reading experience and kind of showing our kids that reading is important to all of us, that your teacher reads, that your cafeteria worker reads, that your bus driver reads, that your superintendent reads. So it was a big community push that we were all reading this book together and just showing that importance of literature and literacy in our school. But the second piece was really the message that our kids got from this book. The character in this book is named Ally and she's dyslexic. And this character had a lot of gifts, the same way that we talk about gifts at Nelson County School. She was an artist, she was an outside of the box thinker. And it really taught our kids that great minds don't think alike. It taught our kids the importance of perseverance and kind of about friendship and the type of, it really made a common language at our school. I had an experience where a few students came to the office and they came to me and they said, "Miss Victory, I know, I'm being ashamed. I'm so sorry, I'm gonna be an alley." But it really was powerful to see these kids make these connections with this book and it really helped our students to be passionate about reading. So this is kind of going to showcase what we did with that at Coxus Creek and some of the teachers and students that really took a big leadership role in that.
Hey, hello, read aloud readers. I'm Linda Bladley, I'm a author of Fish in a Tree.
Hello, Coxus Creek school mom, this is Miss Victory and Anne Josie. And we are reading from our couch, which is where we sit up last together.
Here at Coxus Creek, we chose to do the one school, one book initiative. After we looked over several book titles, we chose Fish in a Tree. It just seemed to go along with everything that we would like to teach our students and our adults within our Coxus Creek community.
We are going to be reading chapter three of Fish in a Tree.
But as a whole, the experience was great because we had so many community leaders come together and read aloud, where we had, each chapter was read by either a teacher or a community leader and the kids loved it.
And we're going to be reading chapter 33.
Oh, look here, my second grade teacher's reading and my superintendent's reading and my lunch lady is reading and they got really excited. And it made them see that books touch everyone and stories touch everyone and it's not just in the classroom.
Now, Miss Dawson has written a poem that is really a beautiful poem and has such great thought. I'm so amazed. This reminds me of our parents' house.
Oh, it's a beautiful poem. Oh, yeah.
So as a family, we've been reading the book Fish in a Tree as part of our One Book, One School initiative. And one day Marion came to me and she has stories to tell. Well, what was it, you know, Ally in the book felt trapped. What was it that made you feel trapped?
Her looking for her dad.
So yes, the people being mean to you, the way the people were mean to Ally. Remember you told me that you wished she were more like Keisha.
Because I feel like you, I feel like my friends are just very thankful.
Because of the book, huh? As a parent, one of the things that worries us is Marion being safe from the mean parts of the world. And this book showed very clearly this character Ally and how she was right in the middle of the mean parts of the world. But she survived and she had a lot of guts.
So this has been a really powerful experience for our staff and our students and our families at Coxus Creek Elementary School. And we're just really proud of the work that took place. There's a lot of people, truly it was a community reading effort and you saw many members of our community taking part in that. But there were definitely some people that really kind of fueled this and made sure that it happened. And one of those people is someone I'd like to recognize tonight, Ms. Michelle Simpson. Ms. Michelle, do you want to come on up? Michelle Simpson wrote a grant in order to find the funding so that every student in our school could receive a copy of this book. And she is one of our K- through two literacy specialists and she just truly has a passion for reading. And when I think about what it means to be a teacher leader and the way she was a teacher leader in this, as far as leading this charge for our school and getting our whole school to be involved in it, I'm just so thankful for you.
Thank you.
The next person. The next person that we want to recognize is really a representative of our Nelson County Community Support Foundation. And they were one of the organizations that supported this as far as helping us to finance this and making sure that every student in our school had a copy of this book and kind of helped us in support of us and let us have the funding that we needed. So Mr. Toby Lewis is here tonight to represent the Nelson County Community Support Foundation. And the last person that we want to recognize, I'm not letting you click, I'm so sorry. The last person that we want to recognize is a student that you saw in our video. He, his name is Mr. Dawson Parsley and he wrote a poem that really connected with Ally and it connected with some of the struggles that she had. And I was so impressed with him, the way that he stood in front of our entire school and read that poem. I talked a lot with him and his dad and I know they practiced a lot that night to make sure that he was ready to read that. And then later he told his dad, his dad had a public speaking opportunity and he said, "Dad, it's no big deal, I talked in front of our entire school." So we're very, very proud of him and just his bravery and that his connection maybe helps another kid also. So Mr. Dawson, do you want to come on up? And Mr. Dawson has brought his poem and he's going to share that with you and just kind of share his character.
Sometimes I think when the wind blows, I think the wind has a piece of paper in it. And the wind is full of papers. Why it's going to discard like my thoughts and I can't get them.
Next, we have Leadership and Learning Corner Leader, Mr. Dawson.
Thank you all. So we learned several months ago that the best thing to do is for me not to talk a lot and let other people talk. So that's what we're going to do. But tonight, you guys are going to hear about the tentative budget. That's going to be an important thing that you guys do. And I think as we get to the end of the school year and look back on 1819 and we look forward to 1920, Amy and her team put a lot of thought in that. And what I really wanted to do tonight was highlight some of the things we've done and some of the places we're going in regards to that. I think you're going to see a lot of these budget conversations come to life over the course of hopefully this presentation. So I'm going to start by letting Jesse Morgan come up and he's going to talk a little bit about Chromebooks and how we're kind of moving to even the next phase of what that one-to-one initiative will look like and some other pieces to that puzzle.
So the board approved last year for us to buy Chromebooks for third, sixth, and ninth grade students to start the first year of our one-to-one program. That has went very well this year. We plan to continue that going into the next year. But some of the things that have grown out of that are, one of the big things, and you guys saw this a couple of months ago, is students fixing Chromebooks, repairing Chromebooks. So at the end of the year, we had 500 and around 550 tracked repairs for Chromebooks that students did. That's a huge help to the IT department, big deal for the students to get real world experience. So we plan on taking that and expanding that. So right now, all the middle schools, all the high schools have student help dads. We're thinking about this year, we're going to push it down to maybe fifth graders. We're restructuring tech staff a little bit so that the tech staff is going to, each member of the tech staff is going to partner with a few schools. So we're going to be in the buildings more. We're not just going to like throw Chromebooks at fifth graders and say, "How do you start fixing these?" We're going to be sitting down with them, working with them, getting them to fix it and maybe have them shipping them off. Well, I think they can do it. I think they can do it. I don't think we give them enough credit. But what we, where we plan on going now, you know, we focused on students last year. We started that four-year refresh cycle. Our teacher devices are aging and we've never had an official refresh cycle for teacher devices in the classroom, so the classroom technology. So our plan this year is to focus on continuing one-to-one students and then focus on the classroom technology for the teacher. So what, this is Austin Mattingly. He has worked very hard to make this solution work. You know, been going over all kinds of iterations, different designs, different things. So what you have here, you have just a regular 65-inch video TV, rolling stand with a Chromecast connected. And he's got a two-in-one Chromebook that doubles as a tablet. You can flip it back into tablet mode or you can use it like a regular Chromebook. He's got a stylus that's built in his house. And he's going to demo that for you guys and show you some of the things it'll do.
So basically, the biggest complaint we ever get from teachers is, "I don't know how to hook my stuff back up after summer." So as you see with this, that plug is the only thing they have to worry about. Used to, we have a plate on the wall that looks like that and they have to plug splitters and stuff like that up into it. It's a little bit more difficult. So with this, you know, all the teachers want something interactive. So with this, they have a stylus, they have a Chromebook, and they have their TV. So everything they want to do is on their Chromebook, they can look at it while it shows on the TV. They can show videos and it's, like I said, it's all wireless. All, it goes with Sam, takes care of speakers and all those sort of TVs. Get out of this here. And then there's some nifty little features on here like Google Keep, which is basically Google's note-taking app. So they can use their stylus and, you know, write whatever they want, like if they're doing math equals. And then they can do all of their stuff while, and they can even change this to squares so they can have their grid if they wanted to do whatever.
One of the coolest things about this piece is a teacher can use this as whiteboard during class, the writing on board. You can save that to Google Drive and you can attach it to Google Classroom. So if a kid gets home that night and they're like, "Man, I just can't remember how Miss so-and-so did X, Y, and Z," they can go back and look at those notes in Google Classroom. And as that teacher's writing on that Google Keep, it auto advances. I mean, it's just like it just scrolls, paper doesn't run out. So I think teachers will appreciate that.
And the last thing we'll show you real quick is there's an extension that we could deploy for them. So when they're just on the internet browsing, they can actually mark up the website, you know, remember this, this is important, you know. Or if they're helping a student write something, they can say, you know, click, you know, get rid of that, whatever they're doing. And then to get rid of that, they just clear it out and then they can continue scrolling on to the rest of the webpage. So that's a really quick rundown of what we have. So basically, what it looks like to connect to it is they can cast straight from their browser. They don't need anything else. It's all built into the Chrome device, so it's not that we really have to manage there.
And then be able to hand this, let's say, they want, you know, they see Suzie doing something really cool, they can say, "Suzie, here, here's the Chromebook, show the class what you're doing." It shows up on the screen. They can, you know, they can interact, they can collaborate. This, the plan is we buy about 80 to 100 of these every year and that would get us on a four-year refresh cycle. And what that means is, the intent is, a teacher never has a device they're dealing with that's older than four years old. Right now, we have some that are much older than four years old and we don't, we don't want to get in that spot again. Any questions on this?
So I think, you know, as we think about school and the future of learning and we've talked a lot about Chromebooks and really the idea behind Chromebooks is not necessarily just with technology in front of us, it's really to break down the walls of school and for learning to happen in lots of different places. This is a further extension of that work because we saw this year, I believe Nuss County High School purchased several of those type of TVs and they're doing a lot of this work. Jesse's husband David has used it in his classroom. And I think you see teachers really liking the concept of mobility. They can move it where they need to move it, they can move it outside of the classroom, they can move it to different places. And it allows walls to continue to be broken down when it comes to classrooms and learning and how that happens. So tonight, as part of that tentative budget, is an opportunity for these things, for the one-to-one to continue with students and also for this to begin with teacher devices as well. And that'll be on a cycle like Jesse said, that'll allow that to happen on a way that is cost-effective for everyone.
For the entire solution, it depends on, rest of TVs fluctuate greatly. So we're trying to write down, get the best deal we can on TVs and we'll continue to do that every time we buy TVs. But it's going to be in $1,200 to $1,300 per classroom range.
You can bet that too, projector.
Projectors, 515s.
Plus the desktop.
Yeah, projector alone is like $515, desktop alone $600, $700. That doesn't count monitors and splitters and all of that stuff. So, and the cabling, you know, we get rid of the wires in this situation. And then right now, another big feature of this, a lot of tickets that we give at the beginning of school, we get a new teacher in a classroom and they're like, "I would like for my projector to point that way." Which means, and we accommodate that. But that's actually a big ask because we have to move power in the ceiling, we have to move the drops because everything is connected. So we have to move all of that over. And then the teacher says, and this is totally fine, we accommodate. But then the teacher says, "But I'd really like my, oh, I forgot to tell you, I'd really like my desk on that side of the room. So I want it pointing that way, but I want my desk on that side." So then we have to run the drops to the other side of the room. It eliminates all of that.
So I have a question.
Yeah.
So, okay, so you'll be replacing the projectors.
Yep.
With those.
Yes.
So what will you do with the projectors?
So the projectors, again, this is a four-year refresh cycle. So every projector that we pulled down in the beginning, we're going to put on the shelf. And then teachers that have projectors that die, you know, we'll still have 300 to 400 projectors out there.
They're back up.
That's what, we'll just put those back up. Yep. So we'll, we'll stop buying projectors. Yep. And then they'll, you know, they'll start to age and surplus out, you know, over that four-year period.
Okay, so virtually, it's a smart TV.
Yes, it is. Yep. Just like you buy.
It's just like a smart TV when I put on YouTube in my home and it's on my television.
It is. That is a, that's a easy, that's a easy-o smart TV. So that's a easy-o smart TV, like you could go to Walmart and buy. And we bought the Chromecast dongle to plug in because it gives us a little more flexibility and it's only $35.
One of the things that you didn't talk about is the nice part about this, every kid in the room can also project to the TV. So you think about the, like any of us can project to that TV from our computer. What's the game?
If we choose, if we choose to do that, yeah.
I'll throw in too, and I was sharing with Ms. Green. So my paying job and the other 21 districts that I work with, there's a lot of them in central Kentucky that have been trying to figure this out. You know, they're seeing that the capabilities and what classroom teachers are asking for is moving more towards this flexibility and being able to do things on the fly. But there's been the technical challenges and it's just been in the past, what, month and a half or so, that between you and Austin and several others on the staff, they figured this out. And now I kind of wonder how many phone calls you're getting from some of these other districts. There's one of them that I was sitting in and they called you and you immediately called them back and said, "Oh yeah, here's how we're doing that and yeah, keep my cell number, I'll help you do it." So I point that out because I think we're lucky with, you know, what we've got with Austin and Jesse and the rest of the tech staff because they really are leaders for the central, well, not like the central part of the state, they're leaders for the entire color of Kentucky with K-12 education technology and figuring out how we can do things more flexible and more cost-effective too.
I'm glad you said that, absolutely. I echo that. You know, the thing I appreciate about them is they pay attention to detail. So when we started this process, there was like a half-second delay between what people were seeing and what was on the screen and that wasn't good enough. So they've worked really well to make sure that this device is very easy for teachers to use, students to use. It's a very simple setup for them, so.
I'm curious, is it through Wi-Fi or is it through?
It's through Wi-Fi, yeah. So actually, I don't get too, probably not going to get too deep on the technical side, but the Chromecast itself, you're basically, your Chromebook is telling the Chromecast what to pull down from the internet.
Okay.
So sometimes you are casting to it, but sometimes it's actually pulling it down. So they get rid of some of that lag.
So will there be like a process to determine, sorry, will there be a process to determine which teachers or which classrooms are going to get this first, 80 to 100, like a year?
Yep. Yep. So we've been poring over data and we'd like to do it on a school-by-school basis, but we're going to look at the schools that have the oldest machines in the district. We're going to start there and then we're going to combine schools that keep us within that budget number, you know, as far as how many we can buy per year. We have linked that on the board strategic, but it's a living document, we're still working through it. But that's how we're going to base it. We're going to go off of age of machine and fitting it in the budget number because it might be this little school that we can tack on even though it's not quite as old, but to get inside that instead of doing half of the school, if that makes sense.
Okay, and what's the budget set up for? What number are we talking about that's in?
The last number I saw recently was 100, 100,000.
I think the way we did it was roughly divided it over four years. So essentially, the age of a Chromebook is good for about four years. So we looked at a four-year implementation cycle for this to occur. And I think the TVs will probably last longer than four years, but I think four years will be a good marker for us to, probably in four years, there'll be something newer that will be much better.
It'll be a holograph of Chase this year.
And I think, you know, this is, this is really like, the reason we're able to do this has come as some of the decisions that's been made. You know, the Chromebooks with students have forced some of this conversations with teachers. And it's really forced us to say, what do teachers need? What does that look like inside of a classroom? The flexibility, the mobility, those sort of, those sort of pieces.
And if you get any questions, you know, right now, we can't print from Chromebooks because we, by design. We'll be printing from Chromebooks next year so teachers will be able to print from Chromebooks.
So you're telling me 100,000? How much?
So what's the annual, what's the annual cost? Yeah, 100,000.
100,000?
100,000, it's what's in the budget right now, yes.
Okay, a flat 100.
I would like to, while you're talking about that, as we're talking about free allocation, Jesse's been working with our copier agreement that we currently pay $125,000 for per year and working on getting that down. Half of that money will come from the renegotiation of our copier contracts because we won't need paper the same. So it is an increase in that expense, but the overall increase in technology budget is not that much.
But I want to ask you something when we get around to that.
Thanks, Jesse.
Thank you.
So the next piece of this, I really just want to, I'm really excited about this. So Justice Pharoah and Laura Mann are over here and they are going to be our district LMS leaders next year. And one of the things that they're going to take on initially is working with principals in each of our schools to put in classroom libraries. So I'm excited that next year, we're going to begin, we're going to put, we're going to allocate $70,000 in our funds towards putting books in the hands of kids in all of our schools in classroom library. I don't know, I don't have historical data. I would assume that that probably does not happen a lot. Mostly it's left up to schools and schools make a decision about whether they want to allocate money towards books or not. But we feel like classroom libraries is a really important conversation for us moving forward because we know that when books are in front of students in their classrooms, they're a lot more likely to pick those books up and read. We know, Ms. Victory talked about it, when the book is put in the hand of a kid, like Fish in the Tree, it's a literacy experience that we want to make sure all kids have. So those two, I'm really excited about their work and they're going to be working with our principals over the course of the next little bit. So what we basically did to begin this was we allocated $15 per projected enrollment per student. So that's how it's broken up for school, just so you have an idea about that. But they, as a district, it'll be $70,000 towards the purchase of books in those classroom libraries. That'll look probably a little bit unique at each school. Each school's unique. Each school has some unique challenges, some places already have some classroom libraries built. Others are beginning that process and so that's really their work of thinking about how they're going to bring the classroom library conversation to life. But I'm really excited about that. It fits very nice with the Dolly Parton imagination library that Brooke's going to talk about. We have the books in the hands of our zero to five-year-olds, so this will be putting books in the hands of others. And I think this is really just a nice starting point for us to do more of this. We know that books are transformative for kids and we want to make sure they have access to those things. We want to make sure they have access to those things. So that's that piece. Next piece, I'm going to let Tiffany, oh, there she is, yeah, talk about a couple pieces that, as we think about student leadership, we think about workforce and what that looks like for all of our students. We set goals that all of our kids will have those experiences. Her work this year has really coincided with that. And we're, as you all have seen previously, we're allocating additional resources towards those things. So I'm going to let her talk about that.
So I have to talk briefly too, because I have great people to bring up to talk about this. So when we think about the same concepts of workforce and getting our kids exposure within our community and within different workplaces, I get to hand it over to Lisa Rucker and Karen Taylor. As they are two crucial components to our program. Really, these ladies take it and run with our students. So I'm going to let her talk about what her program does and some of the places and experiences that our students have gotten through their support.
Okay. And first, let me say, there is no way I could have done this work without the help of Karen. She is a wonderful asset to the program. And I really appreciate everything that she's done. And she shows so much care and commitment to our students in helping to move them forward. The career, or the Community Work Transition Program is for gifted minds students. And they can be ages 14 to 21 in order to fall into work with this program. There are five different categories that we can work with them on. It is job exploration counseling, which is things like interviews, the in-demand jobs and things like that. And then the work-based learning experiences, that's where we actually take them out to job sites. Depending upon their career interest, we can match that student with the job that they want to go into and teach them the skills that they need in order to be successful once they transition from high school into the workforce. And then there's also work readiness, which involves social and living skills. So that helps them develop those skills as well. And we also can do post-secondary counseling. If they decide they want to go on to college or if they want to go on to a vocational school or a tech school, then we can help them get that set up as well. And then there's self-advocacy instruction. A lot of times our students are not sure how to ask for the help that they need. And so by doing this, we can help them effectively ask for what it is that they need for their supports in, in this. And then we also partner with the Office of Vocational Rehab. And what they do is they step in, once the student is ready to graduate, then they will step in and they will help that student because they're already in their system. But they will help that student if there's something that they need, such as if they need to learn how to drive, if they're needing their driver's license. They can provide services like that for those students as well. I know we had one student this year, his name is Adam, he didn't, he wasn't able to make it tonight. But we've been taking him to Fazoli's in the afternoons. He goes daily. And he knows how now to go in, he goes back, he puts his gloves on, he goes back to the freezer to check to see how much food needs to be prepped for the day. And he can come out and, and he knows where to go and get the pans. He knows, you know, the process for prepping chicken or for prepping lasagnas. And, you know, he goes right to work whenever we go in. And he can do things like that. And he can also, he goes out sometimes if they need help, depending upon what they need at the business. He can go out and help with bussing the tables and scraping the dishes and getting those ready, you know, to wash. Is, wash dishes there, you know, and, and some of those things as well. But it's a really good program and it's all based upon the student individual needs. So that it's more individualized for these students that, that have greater needs. Any questions?
I appreciate the, I appreciate the stuff that you have to say. If you don't know, if you don't know, if they don't know how to ask the right questions. That type of push is, puts them in the right direction to get some asked questions that they need to be asked. So I appreciate that.
So she left some other pieces out. She's gotten several kids jobs. So in the summer, they're going to be in different job sites because they actually were hired by employers. So I kind of should have a little bit, Karen, comment on that. So I'm going to, also, we want to thank you for leading the program. I hated this over Lisa, really not having much of an idea of what this looks like. And so Lisa, oh, finally, what you need to do! And she has grown the program. Again, we do get additional funding for this program. So she's been, between her and Karen, together, they are able to fund additional money for that so we can grow this program even more, which gives opportunities for additional students in, in our, in any of our schools, really, to go out on a job site for work-based experiences. So Karen, I want to recognize you as well, because I know you are a true asset to the program. Karen's been with us in this program for a couple of years too, so she's the experienced one. She teaches us these things. So thank you all. I know we have to take things with that.
How many students are involved right now?
Right now, we've been able to service 15 this year.
How many do you look forward to this next school year?
If we can add staff to the program, we can increase that. I would say at least 10, 15 more.
Really?
But right now, we're maxed out. We can only work with four students at a time because it is supposed to be individualized for that student's needs.
Well, I want, I want to thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
It's, it's very rewarding, so.
Thank you. Great job.
So then the other component we want to talk about, we want to talk about student leadership, is Unified Olympics. We, early on, I had Caitlin Mason come and she really wanted to start this program that we hadn't done yet. It was the first in the district. And she's also grown this program. She asked you guys for support early on, so I want to give her a chance to talk about the program. And then she has a student she would also like to recognize for Unified Olympics. So Caitlin, if you want to come up and tell where we stood and how successful we were this year.
I'm bringing my buddy.
Yeah, he's ready. He's been ready for this. He's ready for what we've got here.
Hi, everyone. I'm Caitlin Mason and this is?
Caleb.
Caleb Newton, the senior. As you know, in October, I came and spoke to you about wanting to head start this program. And we were able to start Unified Special Olympics, which, just to kind of recap, it's a sector of Special Olympics, but the unique part about it is that it's just for our school, Nelson County High School, where our kids with different special needs play on the team with kids without special needs. And then we're all, like the title says, unified and playing out there together, which is awesome. And Caleb was definitely one of our leaders in this on our team.
Yeah.
Very excited about it from the get-go, as he's been in Special Olympics in Nelson County for years. But this was a unique opportunity for him to be an athlete in our school, which I think was really special. And I think you enjoyed it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so we had lots of practices. We played against Bullitt East at Bullitt East. We played them at our school in which a mass amount of people came out to support us, which I was overwhelmed and super excited about. And it gave opportunities to other kids, like peer tutors who'd never been a part of any sports in Nelson County, to be a part of this team. So that was really neat in and of itself. And it gave Caleb an opportunity to be an athlete in our school. And I know he's excited for the next couple of years, which he'll still be with us, being a part of Unified Special Olympics basketball. And our hope is to also start track next year. And we've been approached about flag football, but I'm still looking for that. But it was, it's just really been an awesome season. We didn't play too many games because Special Olympics only wanted us to get started, play a couple of games. But we're definitely going to hit the ground running next spring for sure. We're going to beat Bullitt East next time.
Yeah.
When you see them, but it's been awesome. And I'm just so thrilled Caleb is a part of this. Every practice, he was just so thrilled to be there and to be a part of it. Every game, you saw this kid hustling up and down the floor. My husband also, he's like the main basketball coach of our team. So he'll be, "Caleb, hustle!" And Caleb will run down the court like you've never seen before and try to hit his threes and, you know, just an awesome job. So thank you all for your support. We couldn't have done this without Tiffany and everyone else, you know, rallying behind us to get this started. And our administrators at Nelson County High School. It's, it's a dream coming true, truly, so thank you.
It was a great game. I can tell the second half is an awesome.
It's fun, right? It's really fun.
I wonder if he had more fun on the team. It looked like Justin Gagne was having a tremendous time out there too.
Yeah, it was really good for all the people.
So we want to recognize you both for all the great things you said. And Caleb told me, and asked him what, what Unified Olympics did for him. He says, he got to help, would you tell me, he got to help people, got to work on shooting.
Yeah.
And other people helped him.
Yeah.
So he told me earlier today. So we also want to recognize you for all your hard work. We appreciate you, but can you take a picture?
Awesome. And kind of the last piece that I wanted to wrap up with tonight was around the Pride Team work. So you all have been a huge part of Pride Teams, you've been a part of Pride Team. And we're, we kind of at a place where we, we know our next steps. And so this video is kind of a recap of what we've done and some things that we're excited about. And then, once that's over with, I will end this, so.
I am the most excited about my Pride Team work in that it focuses on people and the community. And when we're talking about the future, so often we hear technology, this robotics, and the actual people at the base are left out. So I am super excited with my Pride Team work because it is about the people. And we recall that people are the foundation of our system, our community, and our schools.
What I like the most about it is it's going to bring kids to the table that never would have gotten from class, never would have spoke their minds. I love that part. I mean, even when I was back in school, I was one of those kids. And it took me 20-some years to get to where I am today through learning experiences. And if we can teach those learning experiences while they're in school, how much more are they going to be ahead of people?
So I think the thing that strikes me the most about everything that we've done is how we brought in community members and heard what they need from us and what they, what they, their perspectives. And so I'm really excited to take this further and let our children learn how to be a part of something made over themselves.
When I think about the Pride Teams and looking forward to next year and things that we're doing in the future, I'm really interested in seeing where things go in the principal role. A lot of times we look for roadmaps and things to really guide how we're going to do things. And the Pride Teams have really allowed for us to really collaborate outside of a silo that we've been used to putting ourselves in, especially in the principal role. And one of the things I'm really looking forward to, and we've been doing throughout this entire year, is really spending that time to work with others and really think outside the box and really use that as valuable information as we move forward.
We're so excited about the work that happened with our Pride Teams over the past five months here in Nelson County Schools. Through that time, we've really come to a conclusion that our next step involves two things. Next year, we'll have teachers across our district along with backpack leaders piloting community-centered curriculum through a gift-centered design process that starts with the belief that every child is gifted and it's our job to excavate the gifts of students. Next year, we will also have Backpack Days, which will allow educators from across Nelson County Schools, along with several people from our community, to come together to share gifts with one another and see how we can continue to excavate the gifts of our students. We're so excited to create a future together. So we're, we're excited about the work. I think the Pride Teams have brought forth a lot of good conversations that we've had with people. We know that backpack planning, which is kind of the last piece here, is something that we're talking to our principals about. Everyone in our district will have a backpack plan that really looks at how are we taking our goals as a district, aligning those goals to the priorities that we have? And then how is the learning piece going on throughout the year, through Backpack Days, through days that the schools have, through other things, that aligns this work together? So we're really excited about those days. Those days are going to be really powerful next year. And I think the whole learning process is going to be something that we grow a lot from. And the backpack leaders are going to be able to pilot some things that are going to be really unique. And I think we're going to have a much larger perspective of what's possible next school year around this time. So thank you all so much for, for your work and allocating resources and making the decisions that have allowed some of these things to come to life. This is just a starting point and I'm grateful to be in Nelson County and be able to work with, with you all on these projects. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Mr. Phoebe Foundation up there.
I'm going to try not to take it personally that everybody leaves when I get up here. I have a lot of them too. I promise it's exciting, okay? We've had a really big month, you guys, and I'm going to be quick, but it's, was like the best month ever, okay? So we are still continuing our conversation with the Imagination Library. And, um, as we kind of started this conversation last month, and all of the different people that are really at the table as we are kicking this program off district-wide, the first one that I want to talk about today with you is the Literacy Champions. And so last month, I teased you a little bit that we had a literacy champion that maybe would commit. And we do now! Yay! Yes, wow, yes! Okay, so Flagey has agreed to be our very first literacy champion. And they are committing to $6,250 to be renewed annually to support the Dolly Parton Imagination Library. And so just so you know kind of how we came up with that number, basically, we got to talking to Jennifer Nolan at Flagey and we looked at the babies that were born at the hospital and really kind of thought about how we could support those babies and those new mamas and how we could really show care to them and also really start to lay a foundation for early literacy with those babies. So more to come on this project, but for now, this is a very exciting thing to celebrate. Flagey was also our matching donor for Kentucky Give Day. And so the next piece that I want to talk to you about today is our friends, family, neighbors, and our school community as a whole. And so on May 14th, we launched Kentucky Give Day. You may have gotten one or 500 emails from me around that little date this month. So if you didn't, let me know and I'll get you on the list so that we can communicate with you. But in one day, are you ready? Ready? Wait for it. We raised $2,944. Clap again! Okay, so, um, that makes our grand total of books really for this initiative, 4,377 books that we are able to fund for children in our community. Y'all, we did that in like a week! Clap again! This is a moment for us to celebrate because of all of us at the table. Flagey, their entire hospital community. You know, I was getting emails from, from CHI in Lexington and like, they're really excited about this initiative. And it was just a really cool experience to be able to communicate with all, with all of these people. And also, nobody really even knew what Kentucky Give Day was and we raised almost like $3,000? It's crazy. And it's so exciting really to see, you know, where this is going to go. And also, something that I got to share recently, kind of as we were dissecting the results of this really exciting day, while we were sending these emails out and this correspondence and really getting people excited, we actually got 75 new registrations enrolled in Imagination Libraries just through that like three-day campaign for Kentucky Give Day. So that was a side bonus that we didn't even really see coming. We were just trying to fund this and get this off the ground. And we had so many kids enrolled just through that experience. So really exciting. Our next sort of phase is to start working with our student and student leaders and our teacher leaders as we begin to craft that care package for some of our babies that are going to be born in the community and how we're really going to work to get our community excited and get more kids enrolled in the program. Now that we have a really strong foundation to fund the books for the kids, now we got to get them in there. And so that's really the next component that we're focusing on. We have, we have a meeting scheduled with Teresa Henderson at the Early Learning Center. And we're going to be working with our elementary school student leaders as well in the creation of some fun products too for our community. And as always, we are still seeking literacy champions. So I will end with that. Get me a call, we can talk and work out some, some fun literacy champion stuff. So that's all I have for you.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on to fourth, the operation consent agenda. These items were sent to us in a package. And we've been able to review these. That includes a treasures report, bills and claims, monthly financial report, ballots and sheet, leave of absence, minutes from previous meeting, overnight or out-of-state field trip, diesel and gasoline fuel bid award. We discussed all these last at our working session. Banking services, community eligibility, provision of approval, equipment. Banking services, community eligibility, provision of approval, equipment grant approval, nutritional service equipment, RMP, gift mines, diagnostician, job description, and Lincoln Health Department partnership. I need a motion to pass these, to accept these reports, please.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Ms. Brady made the motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second. Okay, thank you. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Our next item is put people first, and that would be.
This is the personal notification.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, read, everybody can read this. The board acknowledges receipt of personnel notifications and no action required. All this has been changed. I'll get the panel. The next is Ms. McCoy with nursing contract and employee contract.
Yeah, so I'm just following up from a working session regarding the nursing contract. Cumberland Family Medical has finalized their financials, are able to provide us for the next school year, a school nurse for Bloomfield Elementary at 100% their cost. So, and also an additional nurse practitioner. So since that is happening, they are asking us to approve our contract with them. They still do our nursing services. The rest of our school nurses will do the 70-30 split, and they become the, with the understanding, they become the employers of our school nurses. So I'm asking for, recommending that you approve that we continue our contract and they become the employers.
Okay, do I hear a motion or to any contact? Then we take that most nurses as are responsible?
Yes, I'll make a motion.
And I made a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Dixon's second. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Now the B, Mr. McCoy, School Safety Program Grant.
So we are in the process of, we're seeking approval to apply for a grant. This grant is going to cover $334,000 is what we're asking for in the grant, and it would be a matching of around $84,000 if we got the complete allotment of the grant. What I'm asking for in the grant, what it's going to actually fund, is without getting into a lot of detail on record, is to improve our infrastructure. If we consider our camera system and our door system as roads and bridges, our roads and bridges need paving and need to be addressed ever so often. And so that's what we're trying to do with this. This is also going to help eliminate some other things and some other costs in the future. I'm completely open to questions. I'm crossing my fingers hoping that we get this grant, but as with the federal government, you never know.
I think too, this is part of a larger safety plan that you're presenting out of June.
Yes, and this will impact some of the strategic safety, the strategic safety plan that will be focused delivering in June.
Part of the reason we're bringing it to you in May is because this just came about in, so it's a federal process, and the due date is June 30.
May 31st.
So that was part of the conversation, and we weren't even fully aware of this at our last conversation. Just something you've been pursuing and evaluating.
Just so you know, it's going to cover every single school. It's off the top of my head, it's going to be around 300 cameras, and I will compare the cameras moving from like an AM radio camera to HD FM camera. Everything's going to be high quality, cover the perimeter of every single school, and try to eliminate any spots that don't have coverage. Also, access points for doors. There's some doors where we'd like to eliminate the use of old-style keys because we're seeing that problem. What happens if we lose a key? Then there's a key out there in the community that could open our door, so we'd like to move the system where we can use all electronics so we can open and close their access if someone leaves or if they lose their phone.
You had mentioned that it's about a $337,000 potential grant, potentially our part could max out around $84,000 or so. And look at that, if I remember right, that's, it's about a dollar investment by the district, and we get $3 back out of the federal government. So basically, we'll be able to have these improvements to our security in our district across all schools at 25 cents on the dollar.
It's 25% magic.
And this does, does this also help support Senate Bill One that the technical legislature passed, which I know that was the big piece of legislation that was focused on, of course, being Senate Bill One, Number One, that's always the top priority of whatever that Number One bill is. However, there was not any dollars associated with the Senate Bill One. So will this help us start to move towards being able to implement some of those recommendations?
Indirectly, it will. This grant is very specific on what you can, on the allotments that it has. So if we, these are things that are going to need to be done anyway, so if we can use this federal money to, the federal funds to fulfill some of the things we have to use already, we can use some of our other monies to do some of the things that Senate Bill One is asking us to do.
Can you also elaborate on maybe what the savings, the $84,000 will have to invest in, but also we stand to alleviate or eliminate some other servicing that we're paying for?
Yes, so that will be minimal. One thing it will save on is the keys. Kevin Mattingly said that last time they had to change keys, it was $10,000 in one building because we needed new keys. So I'm sure that's going to have to happen at other schools in the future. There is another component I'd rather talk off record about. It's a very, but it's around $10,000 savings as well yearly. Just for safety and security reasons, I'd rather not let that be published on one that will save us on.
So is this the same grant that we have a conversation at the last LPC, we talked about there was some potential grant funding? Is this the same thing or is it something different?
So this was potential, but really even beyond this, we really see potential opportunities through other avenues as well.
But this is different?
This is, this is part of a larger hole we're looking to access. And this is really, I'd say, the first big opportunity we've had to pursue. We foresee other opportunities as well.
So yes, it's a different grant, I think offered through the Department of Justice, but Homeland Security is offering a grant money that could be available to us through Senate Bill One that could help us fund the 84 if we needed it. But we don't, there's no certainty on that, but yes, this is a different grant.
Okay, and so is, in the funding, is it very specific as to what those monies could be spent on, so you can't look around and go, oh, gosh, we need this and this? And they say this is what you have to use it for, so it's terrible, it's very specific things?
It is, it's very specific. Technology and prevention is the main purpose. It's a violence prevention grant, and so anything, any technology that you can use to prevent crime from happening. And so that's what we're going through, the cameras, the doors, and the entire system. One other thing, this will also put every single school in our district on one system. Currently, we have seven, I believe, seven different formats of security cameras. So if you want to look at a camera from one school, it's sometimes totally different than most of the other schools, which is a pain, and it's not accessible for me because I would have to physically go to that building to look at the camera, where the system that we hope to move everyone to would be where I could sit in here and I could see every school, every camera.
It's like on CSI.
Well, Chris Lynn is a media, so if there's something that's happening, then he can come like, oh, I get them, get a video. That's 30 minutes.
And a couple other things, this is mainly for security, but this also helps the building level principals. There are some principals that utilize the cameras because they have some decent cameras, and it helps in the day-to-day discipline. But also, some schools aren't able to use the quality that we hope to give them.
To me, that's just one part of it.
It is. But this is a free part, we're 25%, 75% off part, so.
Yeah. Yeah, because of, stuff I'm interested in too is security when you walk in that door. Visitor management, those kids be able to walk in and not be fearful of something happening. Because we've just had another incident, so yeah, I'm looking forward to that.
And in the June meeting, that PJ has visitor management, part of the strategic plan, and that safety, senior.
Yes, appreciate the help. Thank you very much. Say, I need a motion that we accept this plan, as I would call it, the first major decision we need to make on security. I need a motion, please.
Make a motion to submit the program grant that was just described by Mr. McCoy.
Okay, thank you. Do I hear a second? Okay, the men have made the motion and second. All in favor? All opposed? Thank you. Okay, the next item gets called dedicated to our community, which we have Ms. Owens, Section 125, the Plan Board Appointee, and then the tenet is placed.
So the Section 125 Plan Appointee, we've discussed that at two previous meetings. Tonight, I'm asking for an appointment of a board member to participate in that Section 125 review process. So okay, this is part of the conversation that we've had at the two previous meetings. We are asking for a board member to be involved in the Section 125 review process, and we went over what that would entail, but it'll be helping us to review not only the proposals that are submitted to us, but then also watching those presentations and just asking for a board member to be involved in that process with us.
I'll do it if you all can help. I think it's part of 125. I don't have my phone book thing, and I'm on my, I'm winging it here. Push that thing, please, that decision paper thing. Where? Hey, I found somebody. I want to expect them acquired, die to participate in Section 125 Plan Administrator Review Process. Thank you, Mrs. Die.
So was that a first? We need a second?
We need a second.
A second.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Brady. She's second. All in favor? All opposed? This is it. Thank you.
Now, for the moment you've all been waiting for, let's start at page one, not two.
You're on your own on that one.
So this is just, it's part of a cycle that begins, the tentative budget is part of a cycle that begins in November, December timeframe, and carries all the way to September of the next year. So this is about the midpoint of the process, and so far, right now, we've spent about 200 hours during this process. Many of that was in collaboration with team leaders, a lot of it was me in front of my computer with a calculator to present to you this tentative budget tonight. It is not the final budget for the year, the working budget will be. There's still information that we don't have at this point. We don't have our final seat numbers for our adjusted average daily attendance, we don't have our tax assessments, we have some estimates. But because we do have some estimates at this point, we're able to provide a clearer picture, which is important because our principals are trying to make plans for next year, and they do that by this tentative budget number, and they get to finalize some of those processes and things that they're trying to do. So earlier today, you received a 106-page document that was a detailed format of Fund, of the Fund One, the general fund budget. Currently, on your agenda, there is a 41-page document, which is a summary of all of the funds. It's the format that's submitted to KDE, but it's not the one that we use on a daily basis, the one you received this morning is the one that we use on a daily basis. We'll continue to have conversations about how to read those and to understand them over the next several months, because we'll continue to have conversations around the budget for the next several months until the working budget is submitted in September, and then we'll start the whole process all over again. So I was going to go through some of this stuff, but Chase has done a great job at going through some of the things that we talked about going through this. But every conversation that we have focused on during our entire meetings with every department lead, every team leader, has been around these district priorities. And it's been, how do we take our budget and reallocate to these things that we've said are important to us and that we feel will further student, further our excavation of student gifts? And so that's been the focus of this budget. I feel like we've achieved that, and I'm happy to answer questions if you have them.
I had a question, but I'll ask you later. I really don't want to ask the question.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
So, and it's in this document right here. I just wanted to make sure that as I look through it, that I was understanding this correctly. I noticed on one particular page where it was projected revenues, which again, like you said, we do not have exact seat numbers yet for the 19 through 20 school year, nor the property value pieces. But on that, yep. Whenever I look at the bottom number, total anticipated revenue for 19 through 20, and then whenever I looked a couple of slides later, the estimated expenses, I noticed that they were the exact dollar, that one there is the exact dollar amount. So we're looking at there being a, whatever we go into next school year with as far as our reserves is what we are anticipating that we would come out of the year with.
That is correct. That will be our goal. But I believe that we'll start the year with a little bit higher than what we have this year.
Okay, okay.
So currently, I believe we're at $2,088,000 or something along those lines. I anticipate us being a little bit closer to $2.5 million.
Well, and I remember that whenever we had some of this discussion at our work session, one of the concerns that you shared and that we always have is that we don't want to have a large contingency fund, because then that shows that there are a lot of dollars that are sitting there that aren't going towards assisting our students.
That's correct, but we do want to ensure that we can cover a certain amount of expenses. We're only required to do a 2%, and if you calculate a 2%, we're actually at less than a million dollars. So I will tell you that less than a million dollars, we can't cover one payroll with.
Well, and that's what I remember you saying, is that we've got to make sure that we're very cautious in that we are able to assure that payroll in particular ends up being covered every month, and that by having this little bit higher contingency fund amount will allow us to ensure that.
That's correct. The, a $2.5 million, which the state apparently feels is too high, they only require 2%, would allow us to reach one full month of payroll. So you get funding from the state every single month, and you don't get tax revenues until closer to the November, December timeframe. So we're relying on that state revenue every month in order to make ends meet until tax revenue comes in. Well, what happens if something happens and the state doesn't send out checks at the beginning of the year? All of a sudden, we're going, okay, all's we have left is what's in our bank account to get us through that first month while they figure out at the state level whatever they need to do to get us moving forward. So I feel like $2.5 million is really the smallest amount we really want. My goal is to get us there, and then I would, I would hope that we can keep us there.
Do you remember, remember when they were talking about taking money from those and paying for the dollar pension?
Well, which I know at various times, the Commonwealth at the state level, they've looked at what the contingency funds accumulated across all 133 districts have been. And there's been that question of, well, look at all this money, education, you keep saying you need additional funding, but we see close to a billion dollars sitting in the contingency. But what's not understood is that contingency is sitting there for exactly that purpose, a contingency.
And all of that, those calculations actually included different fund balances as well, things that were required to commit funds to. So for instance, we might have, we might have to commit funds for sick leave liabilities that we have, were required to do that. But when they calculated all those fund balances, they included all those committed funds and everything as well. It wasn't just your regular balance at the end of the year, it was the committed funds as well.
Well, and you know, and again, the purpose for contingency is, it is the what-if, the what-if there is an HVAC unit that goes out. Even the point of the what-if, I mean, Mr. McCoy has brought to us a great opportunity tonight, you know, 25 cents on the dollar potentially.
Which is in the budget, by the way.
Yeah, which, and so we were, but we were lucky enough because we were able to catch it while we're working on that budget for next year. But what if it hadn't been brought But what if it hadn't been brought to his attention in November or December, and the application deadline was January 1st? That's what contingency is for, is it's for either emergency need opportunities, or in this case here, it's a great financial opportunity to be able to meet needs that we have in the district, in this case for safety.
And I think if they don't like unrestricted funds and those kind of things, what if something happens and we have to contribute to things that we really have to have?
Yes.
And you have to think about that too. And you're right, that, that 2 percent doesn't cut it with the size that we are. Now, if you take smaller districts or, yeah, but not, not what we.
Go, I'm sorry, going back, I think it's one slide before, and on this one again, so I'm looking, and it looks like that we're projecting approximately a million dollars more in local industrial sphere taxes. I'm sorry, one after. Yep, that one there. We're also seeing potentially the reduction in SEAC, and if I remember correctly, at our work session, I think you would, without going into the mathematical nightmare of the SEAC formula, you had shared that SEAC going down doesn't necessarily mean there's less money at the state level. It means that based upon the local community being able to pay more of the educational expenses, that that's part of that mathematical formula.
Correct.
But it's still not good, because according to this, you know, it's going to be half a million dollars less in SEAC we get, so somehow we have to be able to find a way to make up that difference in the expectation from the state anymore as being, well, if the local community is going to be that place for that, that money, that gap to be made up.
That is correct.
The, the other one, though, the revenue source miscellaneous, what would that one, just, what is that?
There's multiple things in there. Some of it's investment income, some of it is state funding that we receive for programs like JROTC and part of our safety plans and things like that that we get state funding for. There's also Medicaid reimbursements that go into that. So it's a, it's a combination of many different things, but those are.
They're very unique, very different.
And they're, and they're so small that it didn't make sense to list out 20 different items and show you $10,000 here and $20,000 here.
Well, it sounds like you've put an enormous amount of time, what did you say, $200?
Is that roughly?
Which is probably a low estimate, probably it's closer to 250 or 3.
There were a few 2:00 AM, 3:00 AM sessions, but, so, but you know what? Again, there will be some tweaks before the working budget, but I feel like the more work we put into the tentative budget, the better shape we're in at the beginning of the year, because the working budget doesn't get completed until after the school year starts, and it's not, and our principals and our team leads need to be able to make plans now, so.
And we are, and even though we do not have local property values provided to us yet.
We have the estimates. We only have approximates.
Yes. We are, I mean, we are seeing an uptick within the community though, correct?
We are quite a bit, actually. The property values.
And/or even new property being built.
It looked like a lot of it was property values increasing. It doesn't mean that there isn't a lot of new properties, but it was quite a bit higher than we have had in previous years, at least the estimate has been.
You mentioned backlash from the city, more of the contingency, any other type of backlash in our, our.
We just have a lot of additional costs that we're having put on to us by the state. So if you actually go through and look at like our CERS payments, because that, that increase was eliminated to, capped at 12 percent a year, even that 12 percent a year is $100,000 additional in CERS, and that's before you have salary increases or anything like that. And so every year, we're increasing by at least $100,000 just in the general fund to catch up the CERS items. There are still in conversation about what KTRS is going to be. So it's just a lot of things that are coming down from the state that says, hey, you have to fund these, but then they didn't provide funding for those, you know, and, and we have to, to make sure that they're provided for. They check, we have to submit our staffing allocations to make sure that they comply with what the state requires you to do. So we do that, and so that when we budget, we can make sure that we budgeted according to those things. Those are just a lot of the things that we see. So, I'm not sure I answered your question.
Well, I was just wondering about the criticism that she mentioned, contingency.
I would say that the $2.5 million, I will say that I've seen districts that maybe only have a $20 million budget and have $6 million in their fund balance. I don't think that we'll have the criticism for having the $2.5 million.
Well, and I pointed out, was in some of those cases too, that there may have been this bound criticism, because it could have been that district.
It could have been set aside for a specific project that you had to save up for, it could have been.
Just like we might do in our home budget to save up for the new couch.
Exactly. So I think it's often not understood because the questions aren't asked. And then there's also been the administrative versus instructional, and the focus on getting those costs from administrative level to instructional level, which often is a coding issue that the state also doesn't understand. So we're asking for approval tonight of the tentative motion.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the 2019, 2020, as presented by Ms. Owens. Do you push it? Ms. Brady?
Second.
Okay, Ms. Brady, make a motion. Ms. Dy, second. Do all in favor? Aye, all opposed? Carry, thank you so much. It's not an easy task. Okay, next we have Superintendent Bradley with our District Facility.
So I believe we have three board members who have been through the DFP process previously, two that it will be our first time going through. Just to be clear, on the District Facility Planning process, this is by law the purpose of the District Facility Plan. So we are essentially asked every four years to gather together constituents to build a District Facilities Plan that includes building analysis done by architects, inventories, pricing, and construction prioritization, and this information is used to develop what is the DFP. It's about, really, it's about a three-month process in terms of meeting. It's about a six-month process for the architects to do the analysis of the buildings, and it was also a three-month turnaround from the Department of Education to then therefore provide comments to us. So at the end of the day, the DFP is a mechanism for accessing funds that are restricted for capital construction and major innovation in schools. All in all, the process we've been through already that you guys approved in November, December, was the development of the Local Planning Committee, which Ms. Brady served on, where the architect and engineer building evaluations took place with Studio Kramer, and the LPC over the course of January, February, March developed the DFP. Katie, they reviewed, sent that back to us just a few weeks ago, and the LPC voted last week to approve that DFP. The Board of Education voting process really happens next Wednesday. On the final process tonight, you're really giving us a go-ahead to enter into that process and finalize. Uniquely, the state says to us that the, that they want the DFP approved by June 1st, and that really is what has moved our timeline up a little more rapidly. Generally, we integrate this in the ongoing board meetings as it appeared, but the timeline was a bit restricted. So the KDE and the Kentucky Board of Education doesn't officially approve this until August, just to give some further context. So with that said, we visited during this process, a few of our schools around the district, entered into what I would say was some, some very community-centered dialogue around short-term, long-term needs that led to the development of a DFP that I think answers some short-term safety needs that we've talked about, as well as offers us a, essentially, some options for long-term development at a variety of spaces. So tonight, we'll review essentially the three orders that we are asked to discuss, and we can see if there are any questions leading up to that, so. So these are the three items. So essentially, we're asked that the Local Board of Education consider the DFP as proposed by the LPC. Have you had access to that? We can spend some time looking through that. You're also asked to schedule and administer a local public hearing to document testimony, which is part of a revised schedule, which will occur next Wednesday. And you're also asked to appoint myself, Superintendent, as a hearing officer to conduct that hearing and consider testimony on the DFP, which will be Wednesday, May 29. So with that said, I know each of you have had some opportunities, some of you more involved in the process than others, to look at the DFP. Any questions before we move ahead to the next one?
I know, Mr. Brady?
All right, so, so there's the recommended motion.
Okay, I need a motion to consider the District Facility Plan as proposed by the Local Planning Committee, head tech, Superintendent Bradley, to schedule and administer a local public hearing to discuss and document testimony on the new District Facility Plan and appoint Superintendent Bradley as the hearing officer to conduct the public hearing. I need a motion.
Do we need it all as one package motion or three separate motions?
It's got it written as three separate, but to me, that keeps combined all that into one.
So the, we work with that. Tim Lucas, he said we can package it into one.
Okay. I'll, I'll make a motion then that we approve the District Facilities Plan as proposed by the LPC, also to instruct Superintendent Bradley to schedule a ministerial public hearing, and also to appoint Superintendent Bradley as that hearing officer for the public hearing.
Okay, Mr. Jackie, thank you. Do I hear a second? I'll make a second. Okay, Ms. Dy, second. All in favor? Aye, all opposed? Motion carry. Thank you. Okay, our next one under student and shareholder engagement. Bradley will have our, your calendar.
So the only recommended change in the calendar is the special call meeting, the public hearing of the DFP. The special call meeting would take place Wednesday, May 29, and would allow us to fill out orders for completing the DFP process.
Okay.
So that's it.
So recommendations, we'll change it to the State Board of Education. Okay, there's no action required.
No action required, right.
Okay.
And we have already sent all that into the meeting.
Already, I know. Okay, thank you. Our calendar, guest comments, if you want to step forward, name, address. Those individuals are limited to three minutes. Individual representing a group is limited to five. And like I said, you can step forward, state your name and address, you represent a group, you state the name of the group, you are represented. Do we have any comments with our audience? Once again, I'm thanking each one of y'all on your attendance tonight. We do appreciate it, and we know you care. I need a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Jackie. Do I hear a second? Ms. Brady, second. All in favor? Aye, all opposed?